Like to call to order the city council of West Jordan City for Wednesday, May eighth, two thousand and twenty-four. I am Council Vice Chair Lamb. I am filling in tonight for Council Chair Jacob, who will join us shortly. Uh, like to welcome the rest of the city council. They are all here in attendance tonight, and we will begin our council meeting with our pledge of allegiance, and that will be led by one of our favorites, Becky Conde. If you'd come up and lead us in that.
Would the audience please stand? And join me in the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you.
Thank you, Becky. We will now go to our public comments of our city council meeting. For those that are in the audience today, we do have two public hearings tonight. If you are coming tonight to speak to one of the public hearings, one of those two, we'd ask that you wait until those public hearings to have your citizen comment. Um, however, if you're here for something besides those two public hearings, we are, we will open up the floor. I don't have any names right now of anybody that gave it to me in advance, so we'll open now if you want to raise your hand or come up. As you come to the lectern, if you'll just state your name and what city you're from, that'll be great. First one up. Thank you. Oh, and you'll have three minutes.
Pleasure to address the council this evening. My name is David McLean. I live at eighty-seven fifty-nine Doorly Drive in West Jordan. I have come to speak on behalf of one of the shining stars of West Jordan, which is our Mountain View Corridor Bicycle Trail or Hiking Trail. I often enjoy that trail. I actually came here three years ago to talk about some of these same items that I'd just like to bring to your attention as the council. I'll make this brief. Um, there's two things that are my concern as a, as a professional civil engineer. I have a concern about the pavement, the pavement quality. Um, pavement needs maintenance, just like your car needs an oil change. Um, asphaltic pavement is a flexible pavement system, and it's in the, the section in West Jordan is in, is in um, need of some seal coat or some other pavement maintenance. Cause what happens is that the um, the volatiles uh evaporate out with sunlight out of the pavement, and then it shrinks in the wintertime due to contraction, and then you end up with big um, obnoxious um, cracks in the pavement. So I'd like to remind the council that, that, that in order to preserve your, your investment in that, in that um, bicycle trail, it'd be nice to see some pavement maintenance done. The area to the south where South Jordan, the South Jordan section, they have done pavement maintenance. The area to the north in Salt Lake County, they have also done it, but the pavement in West Jordan, it's, it looks a little gray and could need some benefit. Another thing that I'd like to, to mention on behalf of the trail, um, is that there's no trash cans in all of West Jordan along that trail. So I'd like to make a request that we have some trash cans somewhere along the trail in West Jordan for people to dispose of their water bottles or um, or dog doo-doo or whatever they need to. Um, I think it would improve, improve this trail if West Jordan would do those two things, and I appreciate the opportunity to make a public comment. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, and just a reminder, for those who are online and wish to speak, if you'll raise your hand, we'll get to you shortly. Um, we'll still turn some time over if there's anybody else in the, in the public here tonight that would like to come forward, please come forward and state your name and city you're from. Come on.
Your back is highway. And um, I'm very concerned about the process of things that we can do to help with um, businesses that are running commercial. There's, one of my neighbors has two properties. One is located at eighty-four fifty-three, the other is at sixty-nine fifty-one. Those are both on Otter Creek Drive. He is running commercial rentals out of the yard, the bobcats, uh, skid loaders, trailers, dump trailers, and it's in a very much of an eyesore every time I drive by. I've talked to code enforcement, um, I talked to them three or four months ago. I've talked to business licensing. My understanding is he does not have a license to run a commercial rental business out of the house, and I'm just very frustrated that it seems like when we've got a, a direct violation of running a commercial business out of a residential property, I don't see any action being taken. And the people that come in to rent these equipment, they do not drive like their kids live here. They do not drive very carefully, nor does the owner of the properties. And I'd like to see what we can do to maybe improve the process to help shut down illegal commercial businesses in a residential neighborhood. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Is there anybody else in the audience that would like to do public comment? If not, uh, I guess we'll move to, do we have anybody online that has their hand up?
Uh, currently, no one has raised their hand, however, um.
Yeah, no one's raised their hand. Okay. At this point, then, we will close the public comment and move forward with our city council meeting. We will now go to uh, the city council reports, and I'll give the time to any city council member that would like to speak at this time. Councilmember Whitelock.
Thank you. I just want to thank all the students that I see that are clearly here for their assignment. Must be the end of semester. You chose the meeting, though, it'll be six hours. Congratulations. If you would've come last meeting, it was two, but you know, we'll enjoy having you here for six. I'm teasing, but I'm glad you're here to learn about your government. It's important. When you reach that age of eighteen, I hope that you register to vote, because that is how you decide who sits up here, and your vote is what determines what happens. And vote local, although we hear a lot about presidential elections. I'm here to tell you, the people that affect your lives most are in this room. Next are those of the school board while you're still in school, and then the state. It matters, so good job for being here. I hope you, that you enjoy your time and register to vote. Uh, that's all, Chair. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Bloom.
It has been wonderful these past few weeks attending ribbon cuttings and groundbreakings here in the city. Uh, today, in fact, uh, we did, it was the um, mayor, you may have to remind me the name, uh, it was, it's a Polish catering company. What was the name again, mayor?
Good Eats.
Good Eats. Uh, supporting those local businesses is so vital to our community, because when we support local, that tax stays here, and it helps our community, and it's such an honor to be able to go to that. And then sprung, we did, many of us did sprung um, last week or earlier this week. Everything's meshing together. And what an honor, and I am so grateful to be able to do activities like that and support our community.
Thank you. Councilmember Green.
So I'm not going to steal the mayor's thunder. I'm sure he's got a good picture of the South Valley ribbon cutting, South Valley Services, at least I hope you do. Uh, that was, that was, that was a, a, a good event. Um, I wanted to thank the uh, fire department. Uh, that was, uh, I'll just remind everybody that even though some of you think it's Star Wars Day on May fourth, uh, it's actually West Jordan and International Firefighters' Day. Uh, it happened to also coincide with their uh, seventh, was it Seventh Eric? Uh, I was gonna say Seventh Annual Fun Run, uh, Seventh Annual Run that they run from sixty-fourth West to the one fire station down to Station Fifty-two. Uh, I'm not, I'm, I'm, I'm too broke to even try to run, uh, so I met there at the fire station, and that was a great opportunity to meet with the firefighters and have breakfast with them, and so uh, thanks for the uh, invitation. Thanks for uh, letting us be part of that, and for those of you that don't know, May fifteenth is coming up shortly, like next week, and that happens to be West Jordan Police Day, um, and National Police, uh, it's National Police, National Police Memorial Day, if I remember right. Um, Ken will correct me here in a minute. I'll get a nasty text that says, but uh, it'll be, but that one's also West Jordan Police Day by uh, resolution, so uh, if you get a chance, thank our police officers for uh, what they do to protect us in the city as uh, the fifteenth of May comes around, so thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Green. Any others? All right, well, I'll go then. So um, as I came into City Hall uh, earlier today, um, I saw a whole bunch of art uh, on the wall on the first floor, and for those of you who don't know, in this building, we used to have a, a room called the Shore Gallery that um, shows art of local artists in this area. And so if you get a chance today, uh, as you leave here and leave this meeting, stop for a second and look at the art down on the first floor today. It is amazing, like everything that I saw, whoever the artist is, and I don't know, Corbin, do you have a name by the chance? I don't remember the name.
Vincent, I can't remember his last name, but he's gonna put up a bio, we'll have a bio and information about him tomorrow.
Yeah, so take a chance to look at those today. They're, they're wonderful. Um, I, I know we're gonna have another Shore Gallery here soon with the new, new arts center, I believe. Am I off on that?
The plan is to have the first floor atrium be the gallery. That will display community art rotating. About every three months, the community, the Cultural Arts Society will rotate a different visual artist through to display the art in City Hall.
Perfect.
Uh, the lobby in the Community Arts Center is a secondary place to uh, display community visual art.
All right, thank you. I, I was just glad to have that back. Uh, I remember it was one of the first things I would see whenever I came to city council meetings and just take a walk in there in the Shore Gallery, and so it's great after being gone from City Hall for what, a year and a half, and then just moving in, so it's great to see the artwork back on the walls. All right, now we'll move to our council office report. Mr. Anderson.
Thank you. Uh, just a couple of things for you tonight, uh, council. Um, you see the, the logo behind you, that was actually installed uh, just after lunch today. Uh, we've been waiting anxiously for that one. There's uh, five located in this, in the city hall currently, that's this one on the dais. We have one in the council workroom, we have one at the entrance to the council office, there's one in the mayor's office, and then you probably, when you came in tonight, saw one downstairs mounted to the, the staircase thereby where Julie sits. Um, so those are there, and I'm, uh, the doors have also been updated, uh, these doors to the dais, those have been updated, and so things are moving on nicely in the, in the council side of this. And then I wanted to turn a little bit of time over to Mr. Hallmark on the status of the youth council.
We are accepting applications for the youth council for this upcoming school year, so for those youth in the audience, here's a shameless plug. We have a youth council that gets together about once a month. We um, get to see the internal operations of West Jordan City, you get to rub shoulders with some of your elected officials, and um, we're accepting applications for that right now. Um, we have about five returning from this year's council to next year's council, and then we've received two applications so far. Um, we had a peach jar ad that went out earlier this week, if not Friday, um, hitting Facebook a little bit harder in the coming days, and then we'll have some physical flyers distributed, so we anticipate an even better program this next time around, and thank you for your support up to this point.
Thank you. Real, real quick on that, uh, is there a limit to a number of people that can join that?
Great question. We have a limit of twenty. Um, we had about nine participating last time. We hope to get closer to that twenty number.
Thank you. All right, we will move to the mayor's report. Mayor Burton.
Good evening. Thank you for letting me come and do this. Arbor Day, we had just recently, and we planted a couple of trees for Arbor Day. This one you're looking at here, this was in Vista West Park, and we were doing that because you might recall, Mayor Brian Holliday lives near this park, and so we're gonna dedicate this tree to Mayor Holliday. We put the tree in, so we're gonna order a plaque and invite him and his family over, and we'll let you know when that's going to be, that you can come out as well when the, the plaque goes in, so that was a tree. We have been a Tree City USA for several years, and we'll continue to do so, and this is just one of those trees that helped keep us being there. Big Bend, we have received a grant called America the Beautiful Grant. It's going to be a big boost for Big Bend, so you're, we're gonna be making some major progress later this year and into next year, as we have the opportunity to continue to make Big Bend an exciting place here in West Jordan. And the South Valley Services, there's that picture you were asking for, Councilmember Green. As you recall, they were in our city hall prior to the remodel, and now that we have done the remodel, they're back into city hall with a little bit more space than they had before, and had their ribbon cutting earlier this week. Actually, it was last week, and that's, we're, we're thrilled to have them there. They do some great service for our residents, another residence beyond West Jordan, by the way, but it's great to have them here, and they are now qualify under the state code as a shelter in our city, so that gives us some tax benefits. Okay, next we have, we had the Veterans of Foreign War came out and painted some fire hydrants for us. That was their service project, and they did that last Saturday when everything else was happening last Saturday. And we have these kits that they could do, so if you want to reserve a kit, if you know a group that wants to come out and some, paint some fire hydrants, contact Ariel, and he can get that kit to you and assign some fire hydrants to you, and there would be no cover charge. Okay, a couple of construction updates. We talked about the seventy-eight hundred South Roundabout. Next week, that will be repaved, so if you've driven that, you know how bad a shape that is in, so that after it gets repaved, it'll be open to, the whole roundabout will be open again. And eighty-six hundred South Bridge, that one is not yet opened. UDOT has some more things they want to have done on that, which is taking it longer than we anticipated, so I can't give you a date yet when that will open. Soon as we get some more information from UDOT, we will let you know when that opens. So we had a cutting scheduled, we postponed that until it's ready. Our Public Safety Open House will be May ninth, as for police and fire, so if you like either one, hopefully you like both, please come out and participate in that Public Safety Open House from four to nine at Station Fifty-three, which is the one by Jordan Landing. The Insurer Factory Playhouse is presenting Enchanted April. We invite you to come and get your tickets for that. That will be at Pioneer Hall right here in West Jordan from May ninth to May eighteenth. You can get your tickets online. And Jordan School District Foundation, so Jordan School Foundation, I believe is their name, is getting ready to do their challenge here in West Jordan, their obstacle course, that'll be on Saturday, May eighth. This is a real big event, there'll be thousands of people here, it's a great thing. They start at nine o'clock. If you could be here to join us at nine o'clock when they kick off, that would be great, then you could meet some people and get recognized for doing that. Or even better yet, you could pay twenty bucks and get registered. Our e-waste and shredding event is coming right up, that'll be May eighteenth, so if you have some documents you want anybody else to know about, please bring them over on the eighteenth, and we'll shred them for you, or your electronics, and get those taken care of there. Oh, so you don't have a picture for, so our dumpster day was last Saturday. Last Saturday was great, and we had, we did it a little bit differently this time, so instead of having the people put their trash at the dumpsters, we just have them put it on the ground, and then we use equipment to pick it up and put it in the dumpsters. The reason we do that is so we can separate like the metals from there, and we've got, I can't remember, five or seven dumpster fulls of metal that we took over to the recycling place, so it gives us money, which is good, but it helps reduce the cost of that. Also, because the way the green waste has changed a little bit, we set up a, a location for the green waste drop-off, and we were able to watch that, and we had arrangements made with Diamond Tree to drop the green waste off there for no charge, and so that went over to there, so that, that was very successful. And our counts continue to increase, the amount of people that show up and the amount of weight that we pick up, so that program's been very productive, and we look forward to our next one, but this one coming up on the eighteenth is for e-waste and shred only.
Do we have a number approximately of how many people utilize the dumpster day?
Yes, but it's not on my notes here for some reason, so.
How many bins do we need to fill up? Maybe that's a number.
Well, the, the bins all get full, and we have Ace there, who are emptying the bins when it's happening, and here's our answer.
And by the way, they were great. When I dropped off our truckload, they had four guys immediately pull everything out of my truck, and within sixty seconds, it was completely unloaded, and I had it massive.
So Mr. Clegg said we had eleven hundred vehicles come through there.
Wow.
So, yeah, so Ace is on there, and they, they work till like four, four-thirty, and they continue to empty the dumpsters as they get full, because obviously we had run out of room at that much getting dropped off. Thank you. Any other questions? Councilmember Green, I'm sorry, go ahead.
All right, Councilmember Whitelock has her name up first, so go ahead, Councilmember Whitelock.
Mayor, have we secured a way to, for people to access Big Bend? Have we got a road in yet? Where's that at?
We, we don't have a road for the public to access at this time. Cory is currently working still with Rocky Mountain Power to work that out with them. The access has changed a little bit because of what UDOT is doing over there on Ninety at South, they used to come in, so it's gonna alter a little bit, and he's continuing to work with, so we don't have one secured at this time. However, we're hoping that we can use some of this grant money to secure that once we come to terms with Rocky Mountain Power.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Councilmember Green.
Are we, so now I have two questions. Um, on the Big Bend, are we only looking to come in from the south? Are we looking at a way that we can access it better from the north?
The north is really challenging, however, we're looking at that as well, and also from the east, which comes off of seven hundred west, an opportunity there, but that would require a bridge and may incur additional expenses. And we're also looking at coming from the west and maybe coming down the Canal Road and then jump it across over that way as well.
Okay. It, it just seems like if we spend a lot of money on Big Bend and we can't use it.
Well, we'll still be able to use it. We would just like to make it more accessible.
Um, my que, my, 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 my actual question was, um, this week on social media, we had a bunch of questions about the city, uh, and the auto, I guess it's automated, but the city making phone calls um, on potential water leaks.
Yes.
And my question is, where's the app? We have the ability to roll out the app to everybody. My question is, why aren't we rolling that out so people can monitor their own use and get it even triggered sooner than what we're doing with the automatic phone call?
Okay, so this is with the new meters that we've been installing for the past several years, and we've just about got them all wrapped up. There's very few meters left, but we're close enough that we can start doing that. Our communications department is preparing to give the information out, and it'll be probably June, maybe July, but probably June, do the residents do that? So, but whether the features that come with this, there's a way for that to trigger if the water continues to run, and so that notification has started, because we're starting to put these in place, but we're working on getting the information together for the public, so they can download that app on their phone, and they can actually get, look at it, get real-time results on how much water they're using when they're doing it. What this water leak, leaking thing does, it tracks it, and if water continues to run steadily for twenty-four hours or longer, then it says, hey, there may be a problem, and it could be a leak or a toilet stuck, or one of your kids decided to shower forever, and it'll alert you to that, but once they get that app on there, they won't have to wait for us to notify them, they'll get the notification on their app.
All right. Thank you, Mayor.
I, I just, I, I ju, let me just add my two cents. I, I'd like to see that app rolled out to the city sooner than later, um, because, I mean, we've, we've been talking about this for, I don't know, two or three years, and we, we need to get it out.
We have, we just didn't want to get the app out there, while some of the residents still didn't have access to it, and so we wanted to get it so that all the residents had the access, and some didn't feel like, how come, what are you telling me about? I can't do this, and that's what, we delayed it.
Thank you. Do we have a, a report from the city administrator?
I wanted to tell you about the gallery. Thank you, Councilman Lamb, for letting everyone know about that. Uh, two other things, uh, I'd like Public Utilities to give you an update on some of their projects that they have going on, and also the Public Services Department, so if I can have Greg and then Cory come up.
Uh, it's uh, construction time again, and so our city crews and other contractors are out busily building. I wanted to give you an update, so that if your constituents ask, you could answer questions about some of those projects. Uh, right now, our city crews are replacing uh, water lines that keep breaking in subdivisions. Uh, the location they're at right now is thirteen sixty-five west, and they're working from eighty-six hundred south to eighty-seven eighty south. When they're done with that project, they're gonna go on eighty-seven eighty south from thirteen sixty-five west up to thirteen hundred west. These areas have broken a lot in the last few years, and we want to eliminate that. Uh, the city crews will then also uh, work on twenty-seven hundred west from about seventy-one hundred south to seventy-two hundred south. We plan on, and those are replacement projects, we plan on abandoning an old leaky water line on Ninety at South from thirty-two hundred west to twenty-seventh west, and we'll be relocating those services to an adjacent line that is much safer and, and not quite as old. Uh, the last project we have this, scheduled this year, although we'll do more if there's time, is eighty-six hundred south from Redwood Road to um, fifteen-ten west. Uh, those are the ones that our city crews are going to do. We've also hired a contractor to replace, uh, again, a very leaky water line on thirteen hundred west from seventieth south to seventy-eight hundred south. For those of you who have seen the Dominion Project, it's so old that it has broken three times since they've started working there, so uh, we're excited to have someone come in and fix that. Uh, we also have contractors up at um, the Ninety at South and about Bangator and the Salt Lake Community College building us a new water tank, and they're about a month into that. Any questions?
Councilmember Whitelock.
Thank you. So with the one on nine thousand, between twenty-seven and thirty-two, we've had on occasion the road sinks. Is that why? Is that the old pipe, so?
That is the really old pipe, that's why I'm fixing it. I don't want to shut down Ninety at South again.
That'd be great. Thank you.
Will you, will you update them on sixty, sixty-two hundred south as well?
Yes, so we also have a contractor out at sixty-two hundred south between Airport Road and Center Parkway, that is Kim Ralph, Rolf. He is um, replacing a storm drain line that is really Salt Lake County and Kearns line, but we entered in an agreement to replace that for them before the Millan Overlay Project. He has got forty-five days left on that contract. I wouldn't be surprised if he gets that done before the forty-five days are over.
Kim Rolfe, never heard of him.
Yeah.
Just kidding. Kim, Kim will do a great job, and he'll get it done right.
Yep, thank you.
So we've got quite a bit going on in public services, so I've got a number of updates. Um, but before that, I just wanted to add on to something that Mayor Burton mentioned regarding Arbor Day. Um, not only did, um, for Arbor Day, did we plant those trees, our urban forester, Ty Nielsen, um, actually gave a presentation to the Future Farmers of America at West Jordan High School, um, and we received, he received a lot of compliments about that, and we're, I just wanted to point out, we're lucky to have somebody with, with Ty's knowledge, and, and not just the knowledge, but the willingness to meet with the high school and the students and to, to really discuss the importance of urban forestry and trees, so it was a pretty successful Arbor Day. Um, first update uh, is regarding uh, our streetlights, uh, department and division, and our battle with copper theft. Um, as you know, it's, it's gone on in our city and lots of cities. Um, one of the areas that we're, we've had the most recent problems is actually on Jordan Landing Boulevard, one of the more well-lit areas, busier areas, but we've had quite a bit there. Uh, so one of the efforts we're, we're underway of doing is, we've now purchased a thousand feet of aluminum wire that we're gonna install there, and in hopes that it will deter the, the thieves that, that keep going back there. We don't know if it's the same person, but how they do it, they'll usually come one night, hack up our electrical boxes, light poles, and they'll come back another night or two and pull the wire. So our hope is, they'll see that, okay, this is aluminum wire, and they won't be back, and, and it will use it as our testing area, and then move on into other areas if we're successful. Um, the next update is.
I was gonna ask you a question, on those lights on. I was going to ask you a question. On those lights on Jordan, is it Jordan Landing?
Jordan Landing.
Right by the airport, right?
Yep.
I I noticed they were out like six months ago. So have we replaced them and then they come back and steal them again?
We've replaced them since I've been here six months, probably four or five times. It's it's-
So they wait till we replace them and then they steal them again?
We have, yeah, we've replaced the wire already. We've, a lot of the times they don't get the wire, we catch them after it's all been hacked. But that's still probably about a week's of week worth of work for our electricians to come in, dig it out, extend the wire if needed. So it's a lot of work, but yeah, they they keep going back to Jordan Landing Boulevard for some reason. So we're hoping that this will prevent that. Next update with Pioneer Hall, our water conservation grant we received. We're hoping to finish that within the next couple of weeks. Due to the weather, the all the rain, it really set us back there. What we're doing there on the east and west drives, as you come in, there'll be cobble rock along the sides. And then the the large island in the parking lot, it's going to have turf, mulch, some additional plantings. And also have a little trail that goes through with a concrete pad and a bench. And so it's, it'll look beautiful. It's our parks manager, Dave Naylor, is the one who designed it as part of the grant and just did an amazing job and it's going to look beautiful. So we're hoping to have that done by hopefully the end of next week. We currently have two community development block grant projects going on. One is at Camelot Park and the other is at Country Squire Park. At Camelot Park, we're we're replacing the old drinking fountains with new drinking fountains. Also have the dog fountain bowls attached to them. We're replacing two wrought iron handrails and the necessary concrete. Concrete and handrails were just really rusted and old, broken up. So we're replacing all of those. We're installing three new benches with concrete pads, planting 12 trees. And then we're replacing the existing fences, which are just in horrible shape. We're replacing those with precast concrete wall. So we're really cleaning up that area. Country Squire Park, we'll be adding a pavilion with two aluminum picnic tables and then three additional shade trees in that area. Next update, City Hall, our other grant we received for water conservation. We'll begin that next week. There we'll be doing the islands of the parking lot. We'll be installing cobble rock under all the trees that are still remaining. There'll be about four by four sections of bark and mulch. Then we're going to have some plantings as well, low maintenance, some decorative grasses. And then on the far west end, where there's a little, little, not detention basin, but little drainage area, we're going to have flower beds, some rocks. And we're planting about 15 trees there, just to clean it up, make it look really nice. And that will begin next week. It will affect parking a little. We're meeting with the contractor Friday to get a plan for that. And then we'll update everybody as we get that plan. Last update regarding Ronwood Master Plan. We've hired Somus Engineering to conduct that master plan for us for the entire Ronwood Park. But one of one of the important components of getting that master plan is our community outreach, meeting with the residents there. We've decided to to utilize our first food truck Tuesday of the of the year, which is May 28th. So the day after Memorial Day, when all the food trucks are out at Ronwood, Somus Engineering, we're going to have some some sandwich boards, display boards with pictures. We'll be out there with Somus as well, reaching out to the community members, the local neighbors, inquiring just their input as far as the master plan goes. So that would be our first step in that and working on that. But any questions on all of these?
Councilmember Whitelock.
Thank you. I appreciate, I appreciate the work that you do, but I do have a concern and I'm going to voice it again. The more rock we put in, the hotter our environment will be. So I'm very concerned. Plus then when I drove past Constitution Park and saw our either detention or retention, whatever that is for that park, we're not in, we're in code violation. Our weeds are higher than 12 inches and it's hard to weed rock. It just is. So what's the plan?
Yep, we will be putting a weed mat down pre-emergent as well, that we'll do every year. It'll look similar to what is over at the district offices, next to the Justice Center. All of their islands have rock and grasses as well, as well as in front of the Veridian. So we're trying to match that. It does heat it a little bit, but it's, again, it's water conservation. It is a cleaner look. It's not going to just be rocks. Like I say, we'll have plantings, mulch under all of the trees that are there. So we're hoping, like I say, I agree with you, but we don't like just rock. That doesn't look the greatest and it is, it can be a pain. So so we'll be putting pre-emergent down, weed mat along with bulk, or not, combined bark and mulch, mulch there with some plantings.
Thank you.
Yep.
All right, thank you. Anything else from the city administrator, Corbin?
Nothing further. Thank you.
All right, thank you. We will now move to our public hearings. We have two public hearings tonight. We will start with Public Hearing A, Ordinance Number 2415, with amendments to the West Jordan City Code, Section 852, regarding the cost of sidewalk, curb and gutter maintenance, repair and replacement in the city right of way. And we will turn the time over to Brian Clegg from Public Works.
Thank you, counsel. As previously discussed in our March 20th Committee of the Whole Meeting, we are requesting to amend the West Jordan City Code, Section 852, which is regarding the cost of sidewalk, curb and gutter replacement maintenance. Right now, the code reads it's the responsibility of the adjacent property owner to pay for the concrete. Well, we've ran into several problems as discussed in the Committee of the Whole Meeting, where our crews are continually giving bids out to the resident and nothing ever happens. The sidewalk's never fixed. So we're wanting to change, amend the code to where the costs fall back onto the city. The city will have better control and when we go into an area, we can fix it. We don't have to wait for a resident to approve the bid, if they approve it. Lionel's crew is the concrete crew. They do amazing work. But his hands are tied with how the code reads right now. It's very inefficient. We did take this to the planning commission. They reviewed reviewed it. They gave a positive recommendation. So with that, I'll turn it over to you guys for any questions. Pretty cut and dry.
I have one question really quick. So and then I'll turn the time over to Councilmember Green. I've seen you coming into my neighborhood. My neighborhood is kind of like half new and half old. When I say old, half of it's, you know, 50 years old, the other half is about 30 years old. And both areas needed fixed and both times they were because of trees. Is there any, and this might be something we can do later, is there anything we can do? You know, obviously we're fixing the sidewalks that that need to be fixed right now, but is there anything we can do for the future? So we don't have the tree problem on the west side as people are building?
There is a suggested tree list that the urban foresters put together for residents, the proper trees or the appropriate trees to plant in a park strip if they choose to plant in a park strip.
Yeah.
Our our streets division and our concrete crew, that is, a lot of the issues is the-
The trees.
The wrong tree planted in the park strip and it's lifting the concrete, which we assist with removing the tree and giving the resident a tree voucher to replace that tree. But we ask that they don't put it back in the park strip to plant it somewhere in your yard so we're not back dealing with issues again in the future with the trees.
Yeah, I've noticed the 90, probably 95% are trees and the others are just settling. So the funny thing is, my dad told me when I bought a house, he goes, never put a tree in the park strip because it'll just mess up your sidewalks. I'm like, all right. So now now I see why you said that. Councilmember Green.
So, and I don't remember the 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 from the work session. So I've got two questions on this one. How much, let me, let me, let me ask the first, let me back up. Do other cities do it this way or are we the anomaly and doing it different?
The different cities as far as having the resident pay for the concrete or as far as-
The city paying for it.
The other cities we've checked with, they do the work. They don't put it back onto the resident.
Okay. And how much is this going to cost us?
It depends. We're getting a, there's a lot of variables with this Councilmember Green. We're getting a plan put together to where we have a districts laid out to where we're like District One will will mobilize in and work through that district until we get all the sidewalk fixed. But as you know, it's going to take years to get on top of this because it's, there's a lot of bad areas. With the cost, we have B and C road funding, that's called safe sidewalk funding, plus we have funding in the streets division for curb gutter and sidewalk. Upwards of maybe $500,000 that we currently have. And we can deplete that. It, that's still not enough to to. It'll help, but again, it's going to need more money in the in the long term. And there's a lot of sidewalk. You guys have seen the sidewalk issues we've we've dealt with, we have in the city.
Well, and you're doing gutters at the same time, too.
Yeah, usually when we go into do an overlay area, not usually, we do, we have to go in and we have to replace the curb because you want the flow line to be being able to flow with the new asphalt. So we go in and place for curb gutter and sidewalk when we move into a neighborhood to overlay the the road. So Lionel's crew will be doing all the work order work. All the work orders that will be coming in, that have come in, that we're about two years behind on because of the how the code's written right now. And then when Jason goes in and we decide what neighborhood roads we're going to overlay, we have a contractor go on those sections and do the work in there for Jason before he overlays the road. Hence Lionel won't get pulled off to do that concrete work. He can stay focused on the work orders that we're working through.
Councilmember Shelton.
So I just want to understand some of the logic behind this change. I feel like I do, but I want to make sure I'm clear. The idea is, hey, let's take responsibility for ourselves. Let's let's have, if the resident planted a cottonwood in their park strip, they should be paying to replace the sidewalk and fix it. And I understand the logic behind that, but from the resident's point of view, they're like, no, I don't want to do that. Take a flying leap, right? And and that's what you're dealing with as staff.
Yep.
And and so trying to force that is where we're getting this impasse and work's not happening.
Yep. We move on to the net. If the if the resident denies paying for it, we just move on to the next problem. We don't, and the problem still exists where if we change it, we have the authority to go in and do what we need to do to get it fixed and be done with it.
The city still faces certain liability issues if that goes unfixed. Is that correct? I guess that's not your question.
Yeah. Yeah.
I'm going to jump in here. That's one of the problems with this is that the current system allows residents who choose not to fix their sidewalk to keep the safety liability on the city's shoulders. This change allows us to go in and address safety issues without waiting for a resident to pay for it.
I heard about a Salt Lake City resident who was killed riding her her motorized scooter on a sidewalk and hit a brake in the sidewalk and unfortunately and sadly was killed. We don't want that kind of thing happening in our city. I feel like this change will help to prevent that. Thank you.
Thanks.
I have, I have one more question that I forgot to ask you about. When you go into these homes where the trees have brought up the sidewalks, do you have any resistance from them, homes of taking the trees out?
Once in a great while, but most of the time the homeowner is grateful that we'll come in and remove the tree. They get a tree waiver out of it. Or we have them sign a tree waiver, then they get a tree voucher to replace that tree. So we're, we're not depleting our urban forest. We're actually continuing to build it with younger trees and the appropriate trees, so.
Okay. All right, thank you.
All right.
If there's no other questions?
Thank you.
Okay, if there's other questions, we will move to the public comment portion of our public hearing. At this time, if you are in the audience or online and wish to speak towards this public hearing at this time, please come forward and state your name and your city of residence. And if you're online, please raise your hand. I am seeing on the audience, are there any online, Mr. Anderson?
Yes, there's a first name Ryan.
First name Ryan? Okay, Ryan, if you can hear us, is it star six or does he just have to raise his hand and go?
No, I've I've asked him to unmute. He's now able to speak.
Okay, Ryan, go ahead and you have three minutes.
Oh, yes, thank you. I I don't really care about this issue. It was something that Councilmember Whitelock had said previously. And I I can't see if the kids are still there in the room, the students she she referenced, I have no idea. But she she said, take a good look at the the people up here on the the bench, you know, the the council members, you know, it's it's your your vote is most important here. And I agree with her there. So to the kids there, I mean, take a good look up there. The the council members up there, they're more concerned about, well, and their constituents and their, I I don't know, the guy who just mentioned the scooter thing. They're, they're more concerned about people falling off of motorized scooters due to a break in the concrete when they have environmental problems in their community that are being unaddressed. And in fact, they're being supported wholeheartedly. You you look at the airport, you you have toxic lead particulate being dumped on your heads constantly, kids. And I I would wager a substantial sum that many of the kids out there have measurable levels of toxic lead in their blood and they're dumber for it. Their siblings are dumber for it. Their parents are probably dumber for it if they grew up in West Jordan. This is scientific fact and and Councilmember Whitelock is a purportedly a health professional. Yet, yet she supports the using West Jordan as a training ground, a proving ground for these aircraft, hundreds of thousands of flights a year dumping almost countless levels of toxic, toxic lead particulate matter over the constituents' heads. And then she can mention something like, oh, you know, the 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 rock in the parks might increase the the temperature half a degree. When you have these huge environmental problems that are being unaddressed and and actively, wholeheartedly supported, the the council has not fought the expansion of the airport. They support it. That is their public position. If I, if any of you disagree, please contact me and I'll I'll make a retraction. But they refuse to to address these issues and they're more concerned about rock that might increase the ambient temperature a tenth of a degree on four days a year. So so take a good look at the jackasses sitting up there on the stand, kids. Your vote matters. Take a good look at the people up there. Vote against them. They do not care about you. I'm, I I would, again, I would wager a substantial sum that some of the kids, depending on where you live, have toxic levels of lead in your blood because of their inaction and the inaction of people before them. That's all I wanted to say. I was going to stay quiet tonight, but I just couldn't let that go. You guys have a good night.
Thank you for your public comments, Ryan. Are there any others in the audience at this time? If not, we will close the public hearing for this, or we'll close the public comments for this public hearing and we will move to discussion. Are there any discussion or any motions? Councilmember Whitelock, I'm not used to seeing the names yet. I'm sorry.
You're fine.
Not your fault.
I I'm trying to follow the rules. First of all, children, you're fine. Young adults, you're fine. Don't worry. I want to just thank Mr. Clegg for bringing this to a work session. It is helpful to us to hear the whys. And I feel that this is a wise decision because really where my property line, where I get taxed on and where I'm responsible for is from the sidewalk to my house. The city really owns the sidewalk and my park strip that I'm asked to maintain. And I happily maintain it. So just thank you for bringing that to us so that we could have some discussion and learn the whys and I will be supporting this.
Councilmember Green.
I'm going to move to approve ordinance number 24-15.
Councilmember Shelton.
I second the motion.
All right, we have a motion by Councilmember Green and a second by Councilmember Shelton. Any discussion to the motion? If not, let's vote. Cindy, we'll turn the time over. You.
Thank you. Vice Chair Lamb.
Yes.
Councilmember Bedore.
Yes.
Councilmember Shelton.
Yes.
Councilmember Bloom.
Yes.
Councilmember Whitelock.
Yes.
And Councilmember Green.
Yes.
Thank you. I show the motion passes six to zero.
All right, thank you. Now we'll move to our second public hearing of the night, which is Ordinance Number 24-22, amending the West Jordan City Code, Section 135L7, regarding townhomes in the PCH Zone, planned community hillside, regulations for minimum interior lot widths, frontages and minimum building side yard setbacks. And I believe we have Larry Gardner presenting right now. Larry? And I believe we have Larry Gardner presenting right now. Larry.
Good evening, council. Uh, the ordinance before you, Warren, can you ordinance before you is amending a couple of items in the use table of the planned community hillside zone. Uh, the first is the lot width will be reduced from twenty two to twenty feet. And the side yard setback between multifamily or townhomes will be reduced from ten feet for each to five feet on each side. So a total of ten instead of total of twenty. Uh, this ordinance came is before you because the developer uh Wood Ranch, which is now Terrain, noticed that the ordinance that was approved a few years back was not it was not um copacetic with the development agreement that was approved at the same time. And so it was the developer that brought this forward wanting to make sure that there would not be any interruption or service or confusion by staff in the future. Realizing that this project could be a fifteen to twenty year build out possibly. And many inter, you know, many staff changes over the future. Now, this only applies to the Wood Ranch development. At this point, it's the only piece of property that is zoned, planned community hillside. So that is, at this point, the only piece of property that will affect that six hundred some acres at this point. Now, the planning commission reviewed this and recommends approval to the city council. Do you have any questions for me? Thank you.
So wait a minute, I
We do. Councilmember Green.
I'm I I I'm slow tonight. Currently, it only affects the PC hillside zone. But we do have some other properties along the west side this could affect. If somebody chose to rezone that per um to the south of the Wood Ranch.
Yeah, if that's
Let me get it right, the terrain development.
Yeah, if that's the tool they chose. Uh, however, not much south of here is on the land east map as residential or a planned community that's mostly industrial or the southwest quadrant, if you remember. So and the other uh the other issue, I think, well, I know it is an issue is because the minimum acreage for a planned community hillside is four hundred acres. Now, I think what is more likely is that um property to the west, if we were to annex Rio Tinto property in the future could amend the planned community hillside zone of of terrain and join into that. The council has the discretion. I think a new zone is probably not likely in the future, but hey, who knows what could happen. So I hope that answered your question. So.
I guess we're good. Thank you. If we don't have any other questions, then I will turn the time over to public comments for this public hearing. If there's anybody in the audience that would wish to speak to this public hearing, please come forward and state your name and your address or not your address, just your city residence. We don't need to know your exact address.
You're good. Uh, I'm Gary Langston with uh Wood Ranch Development, also the master developer, Third Kaidens. Clearly, this was our idea. We wanted to stand up and share our support of this. We very much view the the city as a great partner in this development activity. And as as Larry mentioned, as we discovered that there were some inconsistencies between the zone and the the development agreement, we thought now would be the time to clarify that rather than have obstacles in the future that uh could at the very least create confusion for future approvals on townhomes. So for that, uh, I'm happy to answer any questions that you may have for us as the developer, but uh we appreciate all the cities done to allow Wood Ranch and now Terrain to be successful and I think the invitation has been extended to you uh previously, but we would extend it again that uh we're about to start building model homes. We've started constructing our first amenity building and we'd love to get you out on site and have you take a look at what we're doing.
So this is public comment, so we'll we'll bring him back up and you can ask questions after, but if that's all we've got, thank you.
All right, thanks.
All right, if there's anybody else uh that would like to speak, come forward. Mr. Anderson, is there anybody with their hand raised?
Yes, the only one who has their hand raised is Mr. Wilkinson.
All right. Mr. Wilkinson, you have three minutes. If you'll go ahead and unmute and you'll have three minutes to uh do a public comment on this public hearing. Go ahead.
Yes, hello.
There you are. Go ahead.
Yeah, I'm curious. Uh, I I think I just said Ryan on my when I when I typed in my name there, I think I gave an email address as well. I don't know if you guys can see, but uh
We just have the name Ryan. Are are you Ryan?
Oh, yeah, yeah. So it's
Okay, go ahead.
It's a bold leap, sir, to say Mr. Wilkinson, is it not? Can we have a little conversation about this just for a second?
I just got your name Ryan, but go ahead, Ryan Wilkinson.
Oh, okay. Yeah, just a just a speculation on the Mr. Wilkinson part.
No, you said Wilkinson.
Who who did?
You just said you're Ryan Wilkinson.
Uh, no, you you referred to me as as Mr. Wilkinson before the comment started, sir. I never asserted that. Uh, it just said Ryan, I believe. Anyway, uh, I I I'm curious. So I you you heard the response from councilmember Whitelock, said, kid, you're fine, or whatever it was. I I'm curious where she's coming from and what her basis of knowledge is there. I can tell you what mine is. I've been researching this uh for about two years and then very intensely since about October, when the Environmental Protection Agency issued their most recent findings concerning toxic lead emissions from single just an aircraft. Uh, I can also tell you that the Provo Airport is a top one hundred lead polluter in the country. And with the expansion, the South Valley Regional Airport will soon be right up there with it. Uh, council councilmember Whitelock has, I I will venture, I guess, uh, not research this. She's speaking out of complete ignorance. How does she know you're fine? She doesn't know where you live. She doesn't know what your exposure has been like. She doesn't know how long you've lived here. Uh, kids, I I would honestly get yourselves checked i- if if possible. And then take the appropriate action because the 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 council and the council before them and before them and before them have allowed this to persist in their community. They do not make really any significant money off of it, uh, just just a hair over ten thousand dollars. Uh, the airport itself loses, you know, millions of dollars a year between five and seven million. Uh, it serves the the training flights themselves serve no, no purpose for West Jordan. And the problems they cause are uh uh, too numerous to be discussed here in three minutes. Uh, the 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 toxic lead is just one. Um, so yeah, yeah, I the the these are your leaders. Kids, you're fine. She knows nothing about. She says no, she doesn't she doesn't know about this problem until I I I mentioned it to the the council and they just dismiss it. This is what they do, kids. You're not fine. Get yourselves looked at, vote the other way. Again, have a good night.
Thank you for your public comment, Ryan. We will now close the public comments for this public hearing and we will move to discussion. Is there any councilmembers that would like to have a discussion concerning this? Councilmember Whitelock.
Thank you, Chair. Um, I I gave to each of you a proposal to make a slight change to this. While I want to honor what is in our MDA, I don't want to continue those setbacks in the future. And so if you'll notice, there's just a simple uh, number two by each of those, and then it'll take you down and it will say that um, I don't, may I borrow your bot? I didn't keep one. It simply says for applications approved by council prior to June twenty twenty four. This, thank you, this allows the developer to have what he needs to feel good going forward and allows me to feel good going forward because although right now we're saying well, there's not really any place to build these, we have a lot of property on the west side that could eventually, as Mr. Gardner mentioned, if we if if part of Rio Tinto's property one day is annexed into West Jordan, which I would hope it would come into West Jordan and not to a city to the south. Um, then that's a lot of acreage that could potentially be part of our city. And the setbacks are small. We recently, in a neighboring community, Eagle Mountain, had a home catch on fire. And not one family, but two families have lost their home plus damage to others. The homes are close. When homes are close, it's easier for a fire to occur in the next home. So I'm just proposing that we make this small change to the table and ask for support.
Councilmember Green.
Um, I support this with one change is, and that is on the line that says prior to June first, and we put a day in there so that there's no question on what it should be. Um, I I agree with this. Um, my concern is I don't want to leave the door open for future land on the west side. Part of this, part of my concern, particularly on the side setback, you mentioned the the fire in Eagle Mountain, but um over the last week or so, I've had a a resident reach out to me who lives in a in a neighborhood that's actually got some fairly good sized homes. And she told me uh that even in their neighborhood, the side setback is so small that they've looked at buying an RV and they can't park it on their own yard because the side yards are so small. And so in that neighborhood, we actually had somebody who was parking their RV in their front yard. Uh, and we're working, they're working on that. Uh, the city's working on that to help enforce that. But my point is I I the five foot side yards. And I I spoke against the five foot side yards when we dealt with another development over in uh councilmember Shelton's area. Uh, and and I I just don't like five foot side yards. I don't like the the it it doesn't change the lot size. So that the the lot size can still be eleven hundred square feet. And so um I agree with uh I agree with your proposal and um with that one, with the one addition. And uh that's where I would like to go as well.
Councilmember Shelton.
Thank you. I've thought I've been thinking about this and um I'm concerned, I I I agree that uh we should be that we should keep these especially this five foot setback that it it really ought to be ten feet uh in in the future for future townhomes that are being built. Um, and that's the intent of what councilmember Whitelock has proposed here. My concern is simply um simplicity. Uh, I feel like this creates unwanted complexity to the code. Councilmember Whitelock, you know that I deeply respect you and respect your opinions, but on this one, I I do disagree. I think that it'd be more effective for the council to simply render a no vote in this situation if we don't want these to change. And the developers still find to move forward with what they have because we have they have a signed MDA. It's not like we're going to change what they can do in their development by changing this code. They're good to go. We don't need to make any changes to our code for them to continue what they're doing. They would just be more comfortable if the if what their MDA matched the code. Uh, but it doesn't have to. So I am proposing, uh, if the council agrees that we shouldn't change the code. I'm proposing that we just simply vote no. Thank you.
Have any other discussion? Oh, just a quick note, uh, councilmember Jacob, council chair Jacob joined us at about seven oh two, so welcome. Councilmember Green.
Well, I agree. It wouldn't be the first time that we've had MDAs and ordinances conflict. I mean, clearly I mean, actually, the better way to do this would be to amend the code and then amend it back and then it's got the history. Um, I'm not sure I want to go through that process, so I'm okay with the footnote. The foot, I don't I don't think on this one, the footnote complicates that that much, but either way, it I I'm 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 more concerned at the fact that we spent thousands of dollars writing the MDA and we couldn't make the MDA and the ordinance match, but that's a different story that I'm not going to go down the road. But the 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 fact of the matter is, is that we we always try to be consistent with the code. I I think that councilmember Whitelock is consistent, but I can do either way.
Councilmember Bloom.
I would rather see us amend this with the footnote of June first and make sure the MDA matches the code. And then any future developments, if the MDA is not matching the code, then we need I would just, I'd rather see the MDA match the code. That's where I'd like to see it because that keeps the consistency and having that footnote there will allow, will help us. So if there's any other discrepancies in the future MDAs, we can say, hey, look, we we understand, but you need to get the MDA in code before any of this comes to us. I want this taken care of before it even comes to a council meeting. So I'm in favor of the footnote of prior to June because I think that helps us keep the consistency going forward, if that makes sense. It made sense in my head when I said it.
Oh, you're good. Uh, Mr. Anderson, did you have something? Okay, we'll hold off on that. Uh, councilmember Bedore. Oh, Shelton, you're next.
So I I just want to put myself in the place of a staff member who is reviewing an application. And they look through the paperwork for the for the code and they see a five and don't happen to notice the footnote. And write up a whole MDA with a five in it because they just didn't happen to reference the footnote. I feel like for simplicity's sake, we just simply vote no. It's it's easy. And uh, if council disagrees with me, I respect that and uh, I'll let it go. Thank you.
Now, councilmember Bedore.
Uh, I'm I'm uh much like uh councilmember Green, I'm kind of on both sides of this. I hadn't really thought about it in the way uh, councilmember Shelton has has laid it out. First of all, I want to thank um, and I I didn't write down the last name, but Gary, I want to thank you. If you folks are really the ones who noticed the mistake and wanted to bring it up, uh, I wanted to thank you for that, but I'd like to try to see with that. I think I'd like to see a a timeline of when the MDA was done and when it was actually discovered that it was out of sync. And how long we've been at this. I think that would be something as I'm new to this and and all of this likely happened before me, I'd like to see what happened and how it was how it was ca- uh caught. The real thing we're trying to do here is a mistake was made, an MDA was made, so it's going to go through. But what we want to make sure is that the mistake doesn't become the new code. And that is what we're trying to do right here, right now. That is the main thing that we're trying to do with this. And if by not doing anything, the code doesn't change and they still get the the mistake that went through with the MDA still happens, I'm good uh, I'm good with that. Um, I appreciate wholeheartedly uh what uh, councilmember Whitelock has done in bringing this to the attention of that, that this is a way to fix this. And I think we can all look And I think we can all look now, what we're going to be voting on is which do we want to do? Do we want to have something so there's a record of it? Or do we just want to let this happen? And go through my one cause of of not having a footnote in a weird way is that someone could say, you let it happen before. And that's what I want to make sure doesn't happen, that someone can say, yeah, you let this little mistake happen and we don't know how the mistake happened because people will start pointing fingers at, you probably like those people better than us. I'm just, you know, speaking what people will say. That's the thing we need to avoid. And as a council, we need to decide the best way to make sure this doesn't happen again. The the mistake doesn't become code and the mistake doesn't also become a blueprint for somebody else to be able to take advantage of a mistake. And like I said, being being new to this, I'm trying to see what the best way is. So I appreciate what what everyone has said here at this. I don't know quite ram it about yet, so I'm hoping I'll hear a few more things, but I appreciate this. And again, I appreciate bringing bringing the mistake to us so that we can make sure this is taken care of.
All right, turn time over, Mr. Anderson.
Thank you. Just wanted to provide a couple of points of clarity as I've heard you discuss. Number, the first point of clarity is an MDA can include exceptions to code. So for example, if the code says twenty two feet and ten feet for the set back or the lot width and setback, the MDA can negotiate a different setback because the MDA provides the exceptions and is the contract between the city and the developer. So that's the first point of clarity. I can remember the second point of clarity. Second point of clarity. Oh. Thank you, Mr. Gardner. Mr. Gardner was mentioning to me that instead of the footnote, if the council desired, it would be cleaner to do two tables, a table that is pre May thirty Larry can explain it. Mr. Gardner.
Oh, go ahead.
Can I help Alan?
Sorry.
So we need two tables, the table that is proposed before you that is pre June first, twenty twenty four. And then it'd be simple, just leave the existing table in the ordinance, but just put the date of June first, twenty twenty four. Everything beyond that would apply to this table or to the existing table. Do you understand what I'm saying?
I do.
Because I don't, I'm really confused.
It actually makes sense to have both lines there and then that goes with what councilmember Shelton said, where there, you know, what's that little two mean? Then there won't be any questions because there's two lines there to say this is before and this is after.
And believe me, you know, the only reason I would say put two of the bulk tables in there is because I am getting older by the minute and so is the rest of staff and it helps prevent confusion in the future when
Which will probably be, you know, five to 10 years from now. So
Yeah.
I, yeah, I understand. Okay. Councilmember Bloom.
Councilmember Bedore, thank you for saying that. I, that's what my concern was. If someone comes through an MDA and then realizes it's out of code, and like you said, oh, well, you've done it before, I don't want that to happen again. And and yes, Mr. Anderson, I understand there are exceptions and that's the point of, but we need to be aware of that when the MDA is approved. We weren't aware of that when the MDA is approved. We didn't know there was a discrepancy in the code. So being able to say, hey, we understand there was a mistake, we're fixing it, but going forward, we don't want, we don't want to be taken advantage of. We don't want our city to be taken advantage of. So we want to fix it now so it's consistent. That's my thought process.
Councilmember, oh, council chair Jacob.
You, you can just call me Fred. I don't care. And I apologize if some of this has been covered already. I did get here a little late, but I have been studying this item as we discussed it in leadership meetings and and other meetings. So I'm familiar with what's being asked of here and I'm familiar with 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 kind of the implications here. My thoughts on this, and and again, if this has been covered already, somebody feel free to throw something at me. These little cones are great for that, I think. And and that is for me, it's not, it's not so much a question of what happened in this particular MDA and this particular application and whether it should be allowed for that one and not a next one or whatever. For me, it's, it's, is this the right thing to do? Is this the right standard to have in the code for this zone? Period. I mean, because that's what we're, that's what we're doing, footnote notwithstanding. If if this is approved as it was proposed, then this is allowed in this zone for future properties who get this zoning, future applications who apply for this zone change and get this zoning, then they get this width and this setback. And I think that's some of the concern that that some of us have is that somebody else might be able to get this twenty foot lot and five foot setback as well. For me, I I don't know that that's a concern. I kind of like that. We have this zone that has this setback. We have another zone that has another setback. And if somebody comes and applies down the road, you know, and this is a, the PCH zone really only applies to this one application, this one property. But let's just say things happen in the future and we annex some land to the north or to the south up against the hillside. And so that land kind of fits the hillside zone too. And so we decide that, you know, a developer comes in and says, I want that zoning as well. Then that zoning gets the same setback. Okay. I I'm just trying to figure out if if this particular lot width and this particular setback are bad. Are they, are they wrong? Are they, are they inherent, is there something inherently wrong with a twenty foot wide townhome that's five feet away from the one next to it? I don't know that there is. And I think, I think, as has been mentioned with MDAs, as future MDAs come forward, they're going to propose their own exceptions to their own, to the rules anyway. Any planned community zone is going to have an MDA in it. So whether it's here, whether it's in here or not, it doesn't really matter. Because somebody's going to come up and say, I want that. I I'm going to write this into my code and then council, I'm going to lobby you to approve my MDA. And that's going to have that written in there. So that's, that's just my thought is, is I don't think this is necessarily a bad thing. For me, it kind of helps out. You know, we talk about development friendly policies and and legislation and things that have been happening at the state level. To me, this, this is a, is a little nudge for a very specific zone toward a little bit more development friendly setback in lot with lot width. That's my thought. I'm okay with keeping it for everybody who wants to apply for this zone going forward. As it sits now, it only applies to this development anyway. So that's my thoughts. The, the there is a possibility that this could apply to other areas of the city, a lot west of, west of terrain, south of terrain. And so I do believe that this footage, the twenty two and the five, the twenty two and the ten are actually appropriate. As you look at some of our neighboring communities where they make townhomes and they make a, they make a bunch of row, a row townhomes. And then they're only separated by five feet and then a bunch of other townhomes. I I think it does make an environment that the councilmember Whitelock's talked about that in that particular circumstance, if there's a fire in one, it it might not, you know, in Eagle Mountain and the tragedy in Eagle Mountain, one fire hit a home next door. What happens if that's a row townhome and there's four houses and then it starts one five feet under the next building and it takes out that row home? I I I, I think the ten feet gives us a better fire break. At least Derek could park his trucks in between it and and sacrifice truck. By the way, we need a new tiller truck. By the way, we need to start ordering that. We talked about that over the weekend. The, and so I'm good, and I don't think this is going to make it any more developer friendly. We're keeping the minimum interior lot area at eleven hundred square feet. I I think that more than meets the the governor's demand of having small homes. And so I, I think I, I'd rather keep the twenty two feet and the ten feet. I like the, what what I like the idea is modify this one and say prior because, correct me if I'm wrong, and and this is where somebody that may understand ALP better, but if we mod, if we modify an ordinance, we have the historical so that we know what the ordinance was at the time. And so if we, if we said we're going to adopt maybe, maybe the compromise is, is that we adopt the modified table prior to June first, it becomes historical. And we adopt the the current one beyond June first and it becomes the current. And then that's just like any other modified ordinance. And so I I see Larry's head nod. So I think we could probably get away with that. That we have the historical ordinance and then we have the the new one. And so maybe that's the, maybe that's the compromise is just to say modify the land use table in thirteen five L seven prior to June first and then re-adopt the new table, which is really the old table, unmodified for June first and beyond. And so I'm okay with, I'm okay with doing two tables. I'm okay with doing the footnote. But I I would like to make the code and the I would like the code and the MDA to match at least historically. And 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 councilmember Bedore is right. Thanks to Third Cadence for counts, can't catching that, that's, that's an anomaly in the development world. And so we appreciate that, Gary. So thank you.
All right. With that discussion, I would entertain someone putting together a great, great motion with all of these things combined.
I'm going to make a motion. We'll see how far it goes. I'm going to make a motion to adopt the proposed amendment land use table in thirteen five L as the historical table. And then re-adopt the current thirteen five L effective June first, two thousand twenty four.
I'll second.
I have a motion from councilmember Green and a second from councilmember Whitelock. Discussion to the motion. Council chair Jacob.
Thank you. Um. I don't like the idea of two tables. Especially when we're changing the old table. We're, we're saying, we're going to adopt the table as it is, unaltered as the new table and call the new one that's being proposed, the old table. Because the application was before now. So I I think this is, I think it's a messy way to do it. I think the the footnote might be better. Yeah, to me, it's all, it's all arbitrary numbers anyway, unless we have staff and studies and things to back up specific numbers. We're just kind of making numbers, you know, up a little bit. So I mean, not really, because the developer proposed a number and the city had a number, so we're not making up new numbers, but I don't see any specific fire code scientific basis for a five foot setback versus a ten foot setback or anything else. Maybe it's out there, but I haven't seen that.
Councilmember Whitelock.
Oh, thank you. And I just want to thank everyone for the discussion. I very much want to appreciate and respect what the developer is asking for. But I also want to going forward to have the larger setbacks. I do feel it's important. And it's our code. So, so I I'm not tied to any way to get there other than I will not say yes going forward to having a smaller setback. So I like this way because it is what staff asked us to do. They, they asked for the two tables versus the footnote, so.
Councilmember Green.
Well, and the two, this wouldn't be any different than the two tables would just put one in history like a modified ordinance and the new one would just be the one that we see currently. And so it, 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 it covers us. The, the thing that want to reiterate is that the original numbers that were put together, the twenty two and the ten were actually staff generated numbers. So I think there's a basis to, that I would rather trust the staff there to, that that number is better. Yeah, we made, we made some sort of error. It ended up going through the process. We're just trying to correct that. So we, we put the old, we put a table that corrects that in as a modified ordinance and we re, and we amend it for the the future with the, with the new table, and I think we're okay.
Councilmember Bedore.
I just want to double check something. Do we need two tables or can we just make this one table with the two lines that has a before June first?
I think, I think that's what they meant is
Well, that's what I want to make. It sounded like we were doing two different tables and that's
That's the motion right now.
That, but can we just have two lines on one table and not have, look like we've got old table and new table? And we're calling the new table, the old table and the old table, the new table. Can we just have one table that is the new table and it has two lines?
Councilmember Green, did you have something?
Well, the, the motion right now is the two tables. So I, I think what we need to do is vote on that. If we, if that gets voted down, then we can talk about another solution. The, the two table idea was something that staff proposed as, as an alternative to just making it going forward. So that's why I, that's why I proposed that amendment was based on what Mr. Gardner had said. So that's, that's why I made that amendment. Or that motion, sorry.
Mr. Anderson.
Couple of things. Number one, Mr. Chandler, city attorney, has raised his hand. I've got him in as a panelist. But he's got a comment to make. And then I just had a procedural question on the motion, but we can do that after Mr. Chandler speaks. All right, Mr. Chandler, you are live.
I, I will take this time to apologize for tapping on the raise hand button. That wasn't my intent at this point. I will say though, that I I don't have any concerns about the proposal, whether it be two charts, two lines on the same chart. My preference would be the charts over the footnote, so I'm glad that that is the proposal at this point. But I think that either solution, or really any of the solutions that have been proposed will pass muster from a legal perspective.
Okay, Mr. Anderson, you had a procedural question?
Procedural question. We got the, the motion down, but I think for clarity of those that are watching online and for future a review of this YouTube video and reflecting in the minutes. I just want to make sure we've got it correctly. So the, what staff proposed in the packet is that the twenty feet, five feet, I'll call it that, the original ordinance, attachment one is the prior to June first, twenty twenty four. And the new one is amendment one, but not having the twenty and five is the, the amendment number one, just because we have documents that have amendment number one and 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 the original. So just for reference, I want to make sure we have it right. Amendment number one that was submitted by councilmember Whitelock minus the twenty feet and five feet. So it stays twenty two and ten is the table June first forward.
So it's basically what goes June first forward is what's the table that's currently in the ordinance.
Okay, I, that's why I wanted the procedural question. Thank you.
Okay, so we have the motion on the table. If there's no other discussion, councilmember, council chair Jacob.
I, I was just gonna just speak against the motion. I'm going to go with councilmember Shelton's idea here and we'll just leave it. For my two cents, I'd rather just leave it in the MDA as legal nonconforming. And 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 leave the code the way it is. If that's, if the council wants to leave it as twenty two and ten, then let's leave it at twenty two and ten and not, not overcomplicate this. I'm with councilmember Shelton on that.
Councilmember Shelton.
Thank you. I have a problem voting no on this, on this on this because I want the setbacks to be ten feet. I want this whatlits, the, the, the lot widths to be twenty two, but if I vote no because I don't like the table, it's also saying that I agree with councilmember Jacob, which I don't. So it's a little bit of a conundrum I'm in. So anyway, I just wanted to express my conundrum.
Well, let me tell you, you're, you're in luck. You get to vote tonight. Your luck. All right, seeing that, there was a motion and it's time to vote. So it's quick. If you'll walk us through the vote.
Thank you. Councilmember Shelton? It's just the luck of the job. It's just the.
Yes.
Thank you. Councilmember Bloom?
Yes.
Vice Chair Lamb?
Yes.
Councilmember Whitelock?
Yes.
Councilmember Green?
Yes.
Councilmember Bador?
Yes.
And Chair Jacob?
No.
Okay, thank you. I show that motion passes five to one. No, six to one, excuse me.
Thank you, Council. That was actually a great discussion. So good ideas, uh, both good and bad and Shel- and Councilmember Shelton got to vote. So it was, it was great all around. All right, that closes our public comments for tonight. Sorry, not public ones, our public hearings. And we'll move to business items. This is the most exciting time of the year as we get to receive and accept the mayor's budget for the next fiscal year. And we will have a presentation, not by Mayor Burton, but a presentation by Denise, but it looks like Mayor Burton wants to talk first. So Mayor Burton.
Yes, I want to introduce you to Denise, to Ms. Stack.
Hi Denise.
But I'll, I'll, I'll take a couple more comments while.
And thank you for coming. Those that are leaving, thank you.
Oh, they don't wanna hear the budget, do they? Anyway, thank you very much for letting us present this budget to you today. We started this budget process way before we even sat and met with you. Thank you for taking the time to meet with us, to give us guidance. And you know, after that meeting where we had all the department heads with you, they came back and when they were working on their budget, the comments that you made in that meeting carried through and they continued to work on their proposed parts of their budget to the city from what they learned from you. So a lot of this ha- you'll recognize has a lot of the input that we received from the council in that joint meeting that we held over at the hospital. So thank you for taking the time to meet with us to do that. Also, thi- this budget fits li- right in with, uh, Bicycle Riding. You may have read that. But when you're riding a bicycle, it's important if you keep your balance to look further to the distance. If you just look down, right down in front of you, you've probably experienced this. You can't balance yourself very well and you have a tendency to go off the edge you're trying to get away from. But if you look longer distance, and when I did my ride a couple of weeks ago, I had some spots where they put in these rumble strips right at the edge of the asphalt and I had like four inches I had to go in. And if I would look down at that, I couldn't stay in that four inch area. I had to look the long distance. I could sit in there. Well, this budget is looking at the distance. So pay attention is, as you go through there and see how this affects not just this year, but future years. And it's putting this getting us ready for things that will be coming to our city as time goes forward. So take a look at that. And I know you're just getting it today. And I know it's gonna take you some time to digest it. There's a lot of information in there. And we'll make Denise as available as possible to help you as you go through and digest that and, and share it and, and share it back with us. And I look forward to the budget that you get after the work we do. And I'm hoping it kinda still looks like that when you're done with it. But enjoy the budget.
Thank you, Mayor Burton. Miss, I don't wanna say Miss Stack, because you're actually Mrs. Stack, aren't you? Mrs. Stack.
I'm glad, gladly.
Okay, Ms.
Gladly Mrs. Stack. I always go around, my, my husband is a very, um, popular middle school teacher. So everywhere I go, it's Mr. Stack. So every now and then it's nice to hear that I have a name. Um, we're gonna talk for just a moment, um, or a few minutes actually, on the budget, kind of walk you through the new, uh, budget format and some information at a high level so that as you open your budget books and start digesting the information and, and putting together your questions and comments that, um, that you have a guide. First of all, um, the budget format was developed using the guidance from the GFOA, which is the Government Finance Officers Association's best practices. We received an award last, for last year's budget. It is included in this year's budget and we will be submitting this year's budget for that same award. It's the first time, um, the city has received this award since two thousand fourteen. So we're really proud of the work. Our budget analyst, Becky Conde, was really meticulous about going through that application and making sure that our budget complied and met with those best practices. So congratulate her on, um, receiving this award on behalf of the city. The next thing is, is you met in January and you gave us some guiding priorities. So all of the elected officials, we listened to you for a couple of days and came up with some priorities around which we would build the budget. We are hoping that these guiding priorities will be multi-year priorities and not change every year because it's kind of difficult to accomplish much in just one year. But those priorities are resident focused, a sense of community and city identity, some city aesthetics, economic development and employee satisfaction. What you're gonna see is that the budget format, um, uses those guiding priorities throughout the budget. The budget format starts with a purpose for each department or for each fund so that you know what you're looking at and what that, what the purpose of that, um, financial is or budget is for the city. It'll include goals and objectives. So I'm gonna go through these here in just a moment. So purpose, I really didn't need to tell you. You can read a purpose. But goals and objectives, you'll see here. So this is the engineering department this year. This is their goals and objectives. And you can see there's a line between each goal and as something is kind of in, um, indented, that's an objective. That's something that they're trying to do to support the goal. And then on the, I'm not good at left and right. Right-hand side is in italics is the guiding priority that is supporting, that goal is supporting. So, um, some of them have many priorities which they're supporting and others will only have one. So customer service, for instance, is typically all resident focused because that's really who their focus is, uh, department. The performance and workload measures are on the next section down as you're going through the budget for each department. This is the fire department's, um, performance, workloads and measures. Council, you asked that we include survey results that, uh, were related to the departments that you could see how, um, this had changed from a public perspective as well as from a workload perspective. And so those are included in the budget as well. You'll see that, um, question at the bottom and the answer from the two thousand twenty-three survey. And then we'll include the answer when we receive the, um, survey back this next time in here as well. Staffing, um, this was a change that was recommended by the council's Budget and Audit Committee when we met with them about consolidating this budget and making it more public facing and, um, more policy oriented. Uh, as we presented the budget, um, their guidance was, hey, that staffing that's on the right-hand side here that we used to have in the budget book, that's too much. There's just too much information there. You have it in the back of the book and in the departments. Let's just consolidate that. So we have a better vision of how this has moved forward in a simpler format. So on the left, you'll see we consolidated those staffing numbers. Now, all of that detail is still in the back of the budget book in an addendum. But when you're looking at each department, it's really nice to be able to look at it in more consolidated format. So you can see this is the police department. And in two thousand twenty-two, they had a hundred and forty-eight and a half, um, FTEs in their department, a hundred and twenty-two officers. Um, and then in twenty-three, we added a couple more. In twenty-four, we added a couple more. And in twenty-five, we're proposing a few more. So you can kind of see how operations have changed for that department much easier than you can when it is, um, almost drowned out with all of the noise on the right-hand side. So thank you, um, Vice Chair Lamb. This was your suggestion.
Yeah, and also, I mean, it wasn't just me, it was the three of us, but the one thing we wanted to make sure and you said was, even though it's not showing up at the beginning, we have all the details. And if you need more details, Denise has those for all of us.
Absolutely. So there, at the end of the budget book, there's a staffing document with all of these positions listed by department, the grades, the count, all of it. So all of the information is still included, but it allows you to look at the department at a higher level as well. The budget and financial history. On the right-hand side is, this is the police department last year. This was the police budget. There's a lot of noise going on. There's a lot of numbers. There's a lot of, um, inconsequential lines. Um, and so what we have done is we proposed a more consolidated format so that you as a council could look at this more from an operational level and say, okay, well, why have operations decreased by thirty-one percent in the fire, or fire department? I'm sorry, this one's the police department. Or why is, um, equipment increased by fourteen percent? And then, okay, it, uh, uh, equipment increased by fourteen percent, but what does that mean by dollars? Well, now we have the difference there. So that meant seventy-one hundred or seventy-three thousand dollars. It allows you to say, is there, there may be a large percentage of change, but the actual dollar amount might not be much. Something, sometimes you'll see something that was a hundred and twenty-five percent change, but it's less than a thousand dollars. So it really gives you, um, more as a council to be able to look at that and say, tell us how or why this function has changed. The other thing that you're gonna see is, um, a term called indirect costs. We used to call them allocated costs, allocated wages, indirect costs. It's used, they're, um, used simultaneously. What that means is it's, um, costs that are allocated to the department for services provided by another uh, fund or where the department is providing service to another fund. In this instance, it's the police department. And that means that the fleet and, um, management fund is providing their vehicles and equipment as well as all of their fuel. And it is the, um, IT fund who is providing all of their technology and technology support and its risk management. So indirect costs are things that are being provided to the police department from another fund that were being expensed to this fund and the funds for that other department are being provided here. The next session is, um, additional details. This was the before. Again, a lot of words about a narrative and a repeat of the numbers. So, uh, we, we repeated the account numbers. You repeated the dollar amounts that you saw in the last slide. Um, and there's really no reason. They're right under each other. Um, and so we have changed that to be more simpler. So, uh, this is a portion. So on the police department, we saw personnel changed seven percent. Another feedback from the Budget Audit Committee was, hey, we're really more interested in the percentage of change because that tells us what, what's going on there. How is it decreased or how is it increased and is it substantial? So the personnel line increased seven percent. Why? Well, we add narrative on there. We add two sworn police officers that are partially funded from the COPS grant. Um, and then the amount that, that that COPS grant's participating. We added another sworn officer for a service contract for Hawthorne Academy. We had fourteen officers for a career ladder advancement. You can kind of see what that's doing. That's telling you the story of why that percentage change increased and whether you support that change or not. Um, you'll see the operations decrease when we just mentioned a negative thirty-one percent. Well, that doesn't make much sense in the police department. So again, this narrative is really important for you to read. What we did was we transferred a contract for the body camera and evidence, um, storage system to the IT fund. So that reduced the cost in the police department in this line. But it increased the cost in the direct cost line. So you saw indirect costs go up the same amount as you'd see operations come down. So the percentage might be different, but the dollar amount is there and the explanation is there so that you can follow it easily. Indirect costs, this is my department. So, um, what this means is this is gonna be a section that tells you, hey, how else is this service or is this department serving the city overall? And so in my department, and how has that changed, right? So my department serves a lot of, of the different funds. We serve the Development Services Fund, the water, all the utility funds. And those are all services that should be sustained by those, right? We don't have, um, a CFO in the water department or a CFO in the sewer department, right? We just have my department that is serving that function. But the level of service that we provide may fluctuate based on the number, amount of work that's provided by that department. We are seeing a decrease in permit activity this year and development activity. We hope that that will increase, but for now, um, the estimate is that that is, is coming back a little bit. And so that means the workload on my department is decreased. So we're moving, we're moving from an allocation of forty-five percent of our costs last year to only transferring thirty-eight percent of our costs this year. What that means is, is you're gonna see an increase in my department's cost to the general fund because we're providing less service to those other funds. So indirect costs will tell you a little bit more of the story as well. Council, we'll be having several work sessions to discuss the budget and we wanna kind of go over what our expectations are with those work sessions. Um, your next work, work session will be on Wednesday, May fifteenth. We'll be discussing the general fund, the development services fund, the Highlands SID and the internal service funds. I was encouraged to include the utility funds and put the note on their time permitting. I am not sure if we will get there, but I will be prepared to answer your questions as will the department directors, um, for the utility funds if time allows. But we don't want you to glaze over. So, um, at some point, we hope that, um, we'll find a natural break in the discussions, right? Thanks, Chair Jacob. What we'll be doing during those work sessions, um, would be a budget high overview. So we'll do a little bit of reminders about the changes in the departments. It will be less than two minutes, three minutes maybe. And then we're gonna turn the time over to you to have a Q and A with the department director and myself on anything that you'd like to ask about their section. So we're just gonna go department by department. On May twenty-second, we'll cover the Class C road funds, the capital project funds, the utility funds and Fairway Estates and the RDA. Again, a budget overview. These ones are more project related, so we'll go over the projects. Any questions about the projects that you might have or the funding questions you might have? We'll review the five-year plans for those project or for those funds. And then we'll have Q and A with the department directors as well. And then June fifth, we're hopeful that you'll have final questions then. We'll also have a public hearing on the budget and hope to adopt a tentative budget on June twenty-sixth. When I say we adopt the tentative budget, um, our intention will be that we are going through the truth and taxation process and we'll go over that here in just a moment. All right, we've got some new legislation. We're lucky enough to have. Two pieces of legislation happened this year. First one is SB twenty-nine. It's truth and taxation modifications. I don't know how this got through, but, um, it's going to require that municipalities provide notice of an intent to hold truth and taxation by June first. While you're not, um, let's see, not allowed is the wrong word. While, uh, the budget does, does not come to you till the first meeting in May, that's a really short timeline. It used to be the end of June. You used to have two months to work on whether you wanna make that decision or not, but that timeline is no longer. Likely because of what we have done over the last four or five years, we just go through truth and taxation. Whether you approve a tax increase or not, in the end of it, it does extend the time that you're allowed to work on the budget. And it does allow for further conversations with your, um, your constituents and the public. Whether you decide to do that ongoing or not, um, we are recommending that for this year. The county has assigned August thirteenth as a public hearing date for truth and taxation for municipalities. Um, we cannot change that date, so it's a Tuesday night. Fairway Estates, we have had a public hearing in the past if we've gone through truth and taxation with them, but, um, the modification includes an exemption from a public hearing requirement if the tax collection is less than twenty thousand dollars, which there's is far less than that. And so they are exempted from truth and ta- the truth and taxation public hearing process. However, we can choose to continue to go through that process if you'd like to do so. Okay, those are those ones. The next one was SB ninety-one, which was local government officers compensation amendments. This one, it will require us to have another separate public hearing. You're gonna have like fifteen public hearings by the time this is all done. To disclose any compensation increases of certain officers and they're listed in this bill included in the budget. So we will come to you, we will outline those increases, um, disclose those increases and then have a public hearing on that. This is, um, another proposal that's included in the budget. And so, um, none of you are really aware of this yet, but, um, as we began talks about replacing the soccer fields, um, that we will be losing. We talked about the best financing tool to be able to do that. And the best financing tool because those soccer fields are eligible for park impact fee reimbursement. However, if we build them on our own dime, we are not able to recover that park impact fee, um, to pay for those fields. So we could use what we have on hand and we could use maybe a year or two others' collection, but it will not be enough to do all of those, um, soccer fields. We are recommending that we initiate, um, a bond issuance, a sales tax revenue bond issuance for about ten to twelve million dollars to complete all of the soccer fields needed as well as some other park improvements, like restrooms or parking lots for those soccer fields. It would be secured with sales tax. It would be secured with sales tax. The payments would come from the park capital fund. We would be using the current impact fees for the beginning debt service payments. And as we collect impact fees from development, be making those debt service payments going forward. If development were to stop and we were not able to collect enough impact fees to make the debt service payment, we are allowed to go in the negative with that debt service and recover those funds from park impact fees collected in the future. However, the CIP fund would be covering it temporarily if that were to happen. This is new to all of you. It is just a proposal, it is in the budget, but it will be up for discussion. And we would like to come to you with our bond council to discuss this as a parameters resolution in that the environment to issue a bond is best before early fall. So these are some things that we would want to be able to make some decisions on pretty quickly to be able to do all of the work that we need to set that bond in motion. Yes?
Are we doing questions right now or wait until she's done?
You're fine.
I'd like to ask a question on that slide because you're saying soccer fields, but it says multi-purpose fields. So I just wanted clarification.
Thank you. They are called multi-purpose fields. I continue to use the term soccer, but they will be multi-purpose fields. So they will be used for other sports or play other than soccer as well.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions about any of that? Okay. I'm throwing a lot of information at you, but we've sent you this presentation. Sorry, Councilmember Bloom?
No, I just, I guess I'm used to the last couple of years. I like seeing the line items of all the operations. I like knowing how much everything costs and I like going through that because it's helped us develop some of the conversations of what's missing, what's not missing, what we need to add to and what we can take away. And not having that information.
Can I jump in here?
Yes.
The reason why we did that and worked with Denise is that the line items that you see in the budget are basically restricted to be spent on that line in the budget. If you have all that detail, the department, the departments can change it anyway. By state law, the departments can change that and modify it. And so if they can modify it and change it, whatever we do doesn't affect the, we can't affect that anyway.
We can affect that and we have, but we need the information so we can make proper decisions to the budget. That's what I'm saying. Having all that information is a good thing. Not having that information affects our ability to give proper.
Resources?
Correct.
So Councilmember Bloom, I apologize. You were one council member I was not able to get to because our schedules didn't coincide with your travel. So I apologize for this. State auditor requirements are department-wide. So in essence, the police departments, let me go back for just a moment. Right here, where you see the police, oh, I wish this were bigger because my eyesight's not that good. And this doesn't work. So the police department's budget, and you're going to have to just go with me, $28.6 million? Okay. Of $28.6 million, while you have all of that detail on the right-hand side, you don't have influence on that, quite candidly. Because, let me tell you why. The department may use any dollars, like I'm going to pretend. You're going to say, we're not going to allow you to do any training this year, period. Not to police form, but anywhere, right? We're not letting you go to training. We're going to cut all the training budget out of the department. The department director has the authority to spend $28.6 million on the operations of their department and they can choose how that is spent. Even though it was on a line item, it does not, it is not restricted by that line item.
So why do we have the budget then?
That would be exactly, many, many cities only give you the police department and their whole budget because that's what you're approving. You're not approving a line item. Okay, sorry. That's how it has been and how it always has been. That's the state auditor's requirement. So our audit requirement is, did you go over the department budget? If I'm a dollar over, I get an audit write-up. If I'm a dollar under, they don't care. But if I could spend that full $28.6 million on personnel and not do any operational costs, I could spend it all on operational costs and have no personnel. You are authorizing a function of the budget as a department level. We are giving you additional details, which is why we kind of brought it up a level so that you could say, all right, what is going on in this department? And how can we influence that service level?
So I can understand where Councilmember Bloom's coming from though because while we can't dictate how they do it, we could say, and we're going to pick on the police department because it's up here, that I could say, oh, you want $30,000 for Citizens Academy and we don't want to do a Citizens Academy, so we're going to take $30,000 away. Sure, you could still do the Citizens Academy, but you're going to have to cut somewhere else to do that.
That is exactly right.
And that really is our job. And so I can understand the frustration that you're hearing because this way, we have no way to say, well, we would really like to see the lifts in the ambulances. And if we don't see them in the budget, then we don't have a way of saying, we wanted those in there, where are they? Other than calling Derek and we're not allowed to call Derek. So then we have to ask the mayor. And sometimes he'll know and sometimes he won't. So that's a frustration I can see. So maybe help us know how we could find that out.
We have been very meticulous in adding a lot of narrative into the department budgets and specific equipment, which would be more support of public safety, are included in the equipment in the CIP. So we will go over that and they are detailed out.
And like Councilmember Wylock said, there are certain things that we have been able to add or take away because we feel it's beneficial to a particular department. And it's done the department's good because we see it's not in there. And we're like, oh, what about this? And like, oh, well, you know what? We as a council make a budget amendment and add it in there. And without that, when you take away information, it only hurts, in my opinion.
So equipment that you're speaking about is in the CIP budget. That's always been in the CIP budget. It's not in the operational budget.
If you will just point out how many accounts previously in the budget? How many accounts in the GL?
There's 7,700 accounts in the GL.
That's part of the reason why we were simplifying, why as we we helped provide some feedback to Ms. Steck is that there were the 7,700 accounts that they're trying to manage in a GL. And for the small staff that they have, it becomes a crazy process to manage all those accounts.
Okay, so back to, where am I? I'm going the wrong way. We gotta go the other way, sorry. Okay, how am I like staffing, budget, indirect, work sessions, lead legislation, bond proposal? Now we are. Financial forecasts. There is a five-year plan for many of the funds. They are not there for all of them. There are a couple of funds that I don't quite know how to put a five-year plan on for because they're dependent on activities outside of something that I really can project. But for the most part, about 90% of our funds have a five-year plan in them. So you'll see the first column is this year's budget. So you'll be able to see a consolidation of that budget and then the next five years' projections. And also when there is a fee for a utility included in the budget, you'll see what that rate increase projection going forward is. So and then you'll see what that fee might be. So this would be the solid waste fund, right? This is the one that we recognize that the transfer station's coming with the landfill. And we also recognize that our collection contract will be up for renegotiation in the near future, in the next year or two. And so we're assuming some cost increases in there that we want to address early so that those increases are slow and steady and not dramatic spikes. That's where our residents get most hurt is when we are spiking a utility fee and they're not prepared for it. So we're hopeful that there are places where we're going to be using some reserves in some of these projections as we grow and gain that momentum through rate increases that are slower and steadier. All right, so the general fund, this is the budgeted revenue. Sales tax is about 42% of your general fund revenue and property tax is 29%. Franchise tax, that is the tax paid by utilities outside of the city towards the city for the right-of-way. So it's their, sort of their lease of the right-of-way is where their infrastructure is located. So cable franchise tax, electricity franchise tax, natural gas franchise tax. There's all kinds, telecom franchise tax. All of that makes up about 14% of the budget. And then 9% is other revenue. And that tends to be our charges for services or grant revenue or that kind of thing. Transfers in are our utilities transfer, the 5% that acts as a franchise tax from our own utilities. And then limited is what we have in the past called one-time, but we're going to discuss why we chose that word this year here in a moment. Budgeted expenditures, 70% of your budget is personnel cost. So that's where you have the most influence, right? And what's the staffing level and what is the majority of the budget? 22% is operations and capital, which would be fleet replacement, leasing, equipment. That kind of thing is 5%. Debt is 2%. Transfers out to the CIP fund is 1%. And we have very, very, very little, in fact, it didn't even hit a percent of one-time expenditures, which would be a transfer to the CIP fund. The general fund, we have ongoing revenues on the left-hand side of $71.3 million, which was exactly what I just showed you in that chart. And then limited revenue of $21.2 million. I'm sorry, $2.2 million. Ongoing expenditures are $73.4 million. You can see that they're in excess of our ongoing revenues at this point. The reason we changed the term to limited is because some of those things are things that we are expecting to collect but are not on our ongoing revenue philosophies of sales tax. Google fiber permits, which will transition into what we hope will be licensing fees that would be ongoing in the near future. In fact, we just got our first payment of those. Delinquent tax collections, we can't count on those. And then police officer funding. Right now, in our ongoing expenditures, we have five police officers that are grant-funded. Some of those grants have a timetable on them. And we know that we probably are going to continue to fund them going forward so that grant funding would go away. So instead of classifying them under that one-time expenditures, we are keeping them under the ongoing expenditures and assigning limited revenue to them temporarily as we hope to continue to increase our property tax with new growth. There are several large developments that are going into the city that we hope will bring up that property tax with new growth and take up the capacity that the grant is subsidizing right now. This is different than our philosophy has been in the past.
Can you go?
Yes.
So when we say limited revenue here, are we dipping into reserves to pay? Is that the limited revenue?
No, it would be what we would consider one-time revenue. But it is one-time revenue that is multi-year.
So this is, so when it says sales tax in collection of excess of 5%, normally what we've done is we've capped it at the 5% and any of that 5% above goes to CIP.
That's what we hope to do, but this year we are not going to be doing that.
Okay, and I don't see anything on here. What's the proposed tax increase?
It'll be the next couple of slides. Thank you for asking.
Spoiler.
So this is a history of our ongoing revenue to.
Chair Jacob has a question for you.
Sorry.
I'm sorry.
It's not so much a question, it's a comment to what's already been said is is with this revenue slide, and I had a conversation with Denise about this yesterday. I had a conversation, interesting conversation this year up on the hill with one of our legislators who was talking about what we can spend one-time money on versus ongoing money. And I kind of made the joke with him and I said something along the lines of, how many years in a row do we get one-time money before we call it ongoing revenue? And that's kind of what this is right here, right? This is, this limited revenue is one-time, recurring one-time money. Eventually, we'll be able to call it ongoing revenue, hopefully, as long as it materializes the way we think it will.
Yeah.
Right? So that's what that is. When I was initially told that, you know, ongoing expenses exceeded ongoing revenues, my spider senses went up and I thought, no, this is a problem. What's our plan to fix it? But there is a plan to fix it. This will translate to ongoing revenue in the future. We're just not, we're just not calling it that until we see it play out and we can, we know we can rely on it.
That's exactly right. Exactly. This would be risk averse, right? We were trying to avoid the risk of falling into the trap of counting on funds that may not be something that.
We know it's here this year. We assume it's going to be here in the future, but before we call it that, we're just going to take a slower, kind of bake-it-in approach.
Yes.
Thanks.
So ongoing revenue to ongoing expense, this is historical, a look at actual, right? So what was actually done? And you'll see that we're consistent at keeping expenses under our revenues until this year. This will be the first year that we are proposing a budget where this is not, this isn't balanced. But like Chair Jacob said, it is revenue that we are fairly confident will translate into the future to sustain the expenses moving forward. All right, so general fund revenue, you can see here, this is, Council, I have to give you accolades for this. You've worked on this, I'm sorry, for several years since COVID, right? Since COVID hit, when we started saying, all right, we're seeing unusual activity and how are we going to treat that unusual activity? There were many municipalities that counted on it. They just said, well, this is going to be forever. This is awesome. Look what's happening. There was one year, 2022, when you see that that orange line, we had $21 million in one-time revenue, federal assistance specifically, or sales tax in excess of what our normal growth pattern of 5% was. If we had counted on that, can you imagine the situation that we would be in now? And so we restrained ourselves. We said, we are not going to ramp up staffing. We're not going to ramp up operations. We're not going to count on this moving forward. That limited revenue, that orange line was sales tax in excess of 5% year-over-year growth. So we used 2019 because that was a normal year for us. And there'd been a normal decade before that of normal growth. And we said, all right, we're going to keep this normal growth pattern moving forward. We're not going to count on anything more. So it's a 5% year-over-year growth pattern. Anything in excess went into the orange line. Federal assistance, interest earnings, which have gone from almost nothing. Honestly, there's a year where we got like $150,000 of interest because it was .002 to now getting 6% and 7% interest on all of our reserves. And we're gaining millions of dollars in interest revenue. But again, not something you really want to count on because you don't know where that's going to go in the future. Delinquent property tax payments, those are one-time, and then permit revenue, like the Google fiber permits. We have other permit revenue in the development services fund. All right, property tax, Councilmember Green, here we go. The mayor's budget will propose a property tax increase of 3.5%. The inflation factor for calendar year 2023 was 4.48% according to the U.S. Bureau of Labor Statistics for the Mountain West region, which is specific to Utah and specific to Salt Lake City's area. The 3.5% property tax increase will bring in revenue of about $675,000. And it will be applied to fund 28% of the increase in property safety, I'm sorry, public safety costs. So between police and fire, $675,000 will cover 28% of the increase in this year's budget. That's it. So the rest of it will be covered with other revenue increases. An average residence right now is market value at $492,700. I have not. An average residence right now is market value at four hundred and ninety-two thousand seven hundred. I have not received updated numbers, so that is from last year. Taxable value is at two hundred and seventy-one thousand dollars. Right now, with our current tax rate, um a property tax or a home with this value on it would pay four hundred and six dollars in property tax. Under this three and a half percent increase, they would pay fourteen dollars and nine cents more per year, so the proposal would be four hundred and twenty dollars a year for that home. Our property tax in twenty twenty-three um was at point zero zero one four nine nine. Um, and this is where we landed in twenty twenty-three. We're um about seventy-five percent higher than Draper City and um fifty percent lower than Harriman and Salt Lake City, so we're half their tax rate. Um, and then Draper is much lower than us. The cities that have the little ones next to them, they outsource their fire, or they have a special district that collects property tax specific to their fire, and the two has police and fire outsourced to um either another taxing entity or um a special tax rate. All right, sales tax, our ongoing revenue is in the blue, so you can see that five percent just going right up, right? And then our um limited or one-time sales tax would be the orange line. Um, this philosophy is strong. It's reduced risk of reliance reliance on economic spikes or during economic space, and it's allowed us to continue growth even on level years. Because what we're doing is we're reclassifying it, right? Exactly what council member Chair Jacob just said. We're bringing that revenue forward. So if we had not used this philosophy this year, we would see zero change in sales tax. There is no increase. Um, I'm getting ready to send you another sales tax revenue report, and you're going to see like one point six percent increase. Um, it's minimal. So um, this would be a level year, but we are, we are bringing up that sales tax revenue in this year's budget based on one-time revenues that have continued to um perform. All right, the compensation plan, remember that seventy percent of that chart in the general fund, compensation plan increased by five percent from the prior year's budget. Um, the total change in the general fund is two point four million dollars. It includes a two percent cost of living adjustment, which affects all employees except the seasonals. That does include the crossing guards. A merit program, which is a pay-for-performance, um if they meet certain review requirements, then they're allowed an increase. Um, that affects two hundred and eighty-eight employees. Um, that would be in the employees that are not already topped out on their pay scales. Market adjustment, we only had market adjustments, so seventeen employees, which means we're keeping up with our market and we're, we're competitive with our like agencies. A career ladder is twenty-one employees. A lot of times that um many of those are police officer ones going to a police officer two or a three or um a public works employee or streets employee going from a one to a two or a three. So they've performed, they've done some certain things, and they're able to progress. And then an eight percent health premium adjustment, which affects three hundred and sixty-four employees who participate in our health plan. We're asking to transfer three of our full-time employees from the general fund to other funds. One of them is in the IT fund and then two employees from facilities to the streetlight fund because their um duties are exclusive to streetlight maintenance. The addition of six full-time employees, which I'll show you on the next slide, addition of one part-time employee and one seasonal employee. This is a list of the positions and the revenue associated with those positions, so we're requesting the addition of three new police officers. You can see the personnel cost is on that first column. The other cost is um for police officers specifically, it's a vehicle, uniforms and equipment like guns and tasers and body armor and that whole thing. Um, and then the revenue that's generated from that police officer. So if you were to say, I'm not going to approve police officer one, um, then we would have to give back that COPs grant, which is the grant that they've secured to fund this officer um in part for three years. Um, in full disclosure, we have submitted for and we're received four COPs grants for four officers. We have chosen to add two of them this year and may propose to add the, the other two next year. Or if we choose not to, we may also turn down those grants. It's up to you, but we have been awarded four of them. The other um police officer is in response to a request from a charter school to contract for a school resource officer, and in exchange, they're going to be providing the city a hundred and fifteen thousand dollars towards that officer um each year. So that's going to be an officer assigned to that school, but during the summer months and other times, they will be able to serve the city as well. Um, we're asking for an accountant to be added to my department, um a communications specialist for public affairs, an events assistant, which will be offset with um an increase in ticket sales pricing, so we increase those by one or two dollars, and then um liquor sale uh cost increase. So um the beer sales that go on at the events, we're going to increase that one or two dollars as well. Um, a passport agent for part-time, we would like to extend service to walk-ins, which we don't do right now. We require an appointment. Um, and estimate that revenue to bring in more than the cost of the agent, so we're hopeful that you'll prove that one. Um, and then the CIO um has an intern that has started. Um, we received a five thousand dollar grant for the first year, and the cost of that intern is about sixteen thousand dollars for um the four months that they work for us. So those are the new positions that are being requested in the budget, in the general fund. Other changes, um this is a big one. Last year, um we had a lot of reserves in the fleet replacement fund, in the fleet management fund, and cars were not coming in as quickly as we ordered them, and so we slowed back the pressure from the general fund for the full cost replacement. Well, now they all hit us at once. We have a truck lot over at um at the fleet department. Uh, but that said, uh, we are going to need to restore those reserves, and so we are putting back into motion the full cost recovery for fleet into the general fund. Did increase the general fund, so you're going to see indirect costs go up throughout almost all the departments that have vehicles. That would be why, because we're getting to full cost recovery, and that's noted in all those additional details. Um, additional changes, um our tasers for our police department are out of warranty and out of hmm, technology and need to be replaced, and so we are asking for a contract to replace those tasers. It would be seventy-three thousand dollars a year, and will include all of the tasers, all of the cartridges, and then cartridge replacement and all of the training required for the tasers. The addition of a drone show to Westernstown Pete will cost forty thousand dollars, an increase to the purse rodeo, rodeo purse is twenty-two thousand dollars. We'd like to add summer movies in the park for twenty-one thousand dollars, and we'd like to continue the first Friday events, but we'll have to contribute an additional twelve thousand dollars.
Are we doing drone show and fireworks?
Mm-hmm. Oh, I don't know.
I won't. Two nights of fireworks, two nights of drone shows.
One night of fireworks, two nights of drone shows for the public who are listening, which is probably two people. Um, and then we are, uh, fire administration is asking for, I hope it's more than two people, but I don't know. Fire administration um has requested a reclassification of a battalion chief to a deputy chief. Um, and that reclassification will cost about seven thousand dollars. So that's a thousand dollars there. I'm sorry, a million dollars. All right, um really quickly, we'll go through these last slides, the development services fund. Um, we know that permit, permit activity is slowing down considerably, so you're going to see a deficit in this fund. Um, what you need to know is that the state auditor um kind of expects this to happen every now and then, so that when development activity comes, comes down a bit, we're going to have to subsidize this with the general fund. We're having to subsidize it this year as well. Um, but when we go in the negative, that means when we do collect development permit fees and it's in the positive, it's supposed to pay it back. Overall, over a five-year, five, seven-year period, you should be at net zero. That means your fees are right. They're at the right area, and you can't get criticized for them. Um, when you see this, you're like, all right, our fees may be right, but but we're not at the right permit activity right now for to support the activities in this fund. The direct costs are the planning in the building department, okay? So they are, their costs are under the permit revenue that we expect this next year. The indirect costs are all of the other departments that are contributing, including the council. So twenty-five percent of the council's time and cost is allocated to the development services fund because twenty-five percent of your time or more is really talking about development, right? So um, those permit fees should be paying for the council's time. They should be paying for the CIO and the mayor's time. They should be paying for the finance department's time. Um, and so that's where those indirect costs come in, and that's really where we're going to kind of come under. This is historically our permit revenue, and you can see it's always remained really high. Um, and this is always something you want to watch out for as you're a growth city, that you don't start depending on this to sustain your general fund, which is exactly why the legislature and the state auditor's office brought this up. Chair Lam, Council Vice Chair Lam, do you have a question?
I don't. You want me to give you one?
Sure.
Okay.
I'm just kidding, okay.
No.
Um, the Highlands Special Improvement District, um, these are the assessments. Um, this is by agreement. We don't, don't influence these at all. Um, there is going to be no fee increase for the residents. Um, a fee decrease for the commercial properties. Um, the revenue increase that you're going to see in this fund is from growth in the area, which is great, and eventually will push down that fee a bit. Um, and the city's participation, the city's participation is required at, at twenty percent, no matter what. There's no change to the operations budget. We're doing a good job in that area, but we are going to be adding some improvements and using some other reserves to do that, so we're going to add a playground and a pavilion as well as some other small improvements, so we're really excited to um roll that out to the residents of this area, and I think they're going to be excited to see that improvement. Capital projects, we just talked about the bond that we would, um, we, we are going to be bringing to you for consideration. Um, other government contributions, we're going to have about ten point three million dollars. Um, you can see what for. And then some impact fees are wrote, this is where you really want to concentrate a lot of your um attention because this is a big dollar amount. This is forty-two point five million dollars in capital projects. You've got sixteen point eight million dollars in road projects. You've got sixteen point seven million dollars in park projects. You've got a community center and other facility projects, and then the equipment, which is um really to support public works and public safety, and you'll see the equipment listed there. All right, utility funds, really quick. There is going to be utility rate increases on all of the utilities this year. There is proposed in all of them. Um, the percentage of increase is in that first column. The, the, well, not first column, first column's utility, but the second column. The third column is the current utility bill for someone that's choosing seven thousand gallons of water a month. Um, and then what the proposed change would be, would be the next column and then the amount of the change. I'd like to disclose to you that there is a ten percent increase in the sewer fund, but a hundred percent of that is passed through to South Valley Water Reclamation Facility for their funding requirements from us. So we have no control over that. We are only twenty percent of the vote um at South Valley Water, and so um, it's a requirement that we just have to fund at this point. So by no means was this ten percent anything to do with our distribution system or our operations. It is all about sewer treatment or the sewer treatment plant. Um, you'll see too that Jordan Valley Water increased their rates by three percent. We have increases from the landfill and um our ACE disposal contract increased three point six percent. So to be candid, the ones that the council influences are the stormwater and streetlight funds, but they have very little to no influence on the rate increases for the other utilities because they are really pass-throughs from contract services. Uh, fake changes to the utility funds, um some shared costs between some of the utilities. We're going to add a utilities inspector, and we're going to also have, um, we have our utilities engineering manager who has announced that he will be retiring, and we're going to need six months of secession planning to get everything out of his brain into someone else's brain because he's been here forever. So um, we're asking for secession training money. It would be one time out of the utilities for that. The sewer fund, we're asking for an additional vehicle um so that the supervisor can give their truck to the crew that is supporting. They only have one truck and one supervisor truck. They would like two crew trucks and add a vehicle for a supervisor. Um, and in the streetlight fund, we'd like to add another electrician because we are seeing the need for the maintenance in our streetlights and um quite honestly, responses to the theft. So um, we're going to transfer the electrician from the general fund and the apprentice from the general fund and add a full-time electrician, which will make a crew that's dedicated to streetlights. They will be supervised by a master electrician who is already funded in the facilities department. So that master electrician serves a lot of other functions and supervises these um who only work on the streetlights. And last of all, our internal service funds. So um fleet management, we talked about the full cost recovery, so you're going to see their um revenue increase through assessments to the other funds, and then there's seven new vehicles to support um some of the requests, so three new ones for the police officers. Um, and then some, and one for like the stormwater fund or the sewer fund that we just talked about. So you'll see those vehicles listed. In IT, um, we're asking for one-time funds to complete a software implementation. We're going to, this is the year that we will be replacing computers for the police department, which is a large lift. Um, I hate when we purchase everything at once because then it comes back to haunt us. This is the year it haunts us. So um, that's going to be about a four hundred and fifty thousand dollar increase. We're going to add five new computers for the new staff. We're going to transfer a police technology specialist from the general fund over into the IT fund, but again, it's budget neutral. So we're charging the police for it, but we're moving the actual person over here. Uh, we moved a majority or all of the IT contracts from all of the funds into one place so that the IT manager can always know what software we have and what contracts we have. That is critical for us to maintain a safe network. Um, and so we have transferred all those costs. They were being paid in all these different departments. Um, and we transferred the body and vehicle camera and evidence system contract over from the IT, to the IT fund. Finally, the benefits management fund. Um, you're going to see a large lift for leave buyout at the end of employment. We have had a large um amount of employees that are very tenured and senior leave this year. Typically, I will spend about two hundred and fifty thousand dollars in leave buyouts when they retire or move on somewhere else. This year, I've spent twenty twenty-four, seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars. And I have several people who have announced their retirement that will generate some pretty hefty leave buyouts. Now, leave buyouts are not golden parachutes. They are vacation time that has sat on the bank, um, in the bank for them, so they're allowed to keep so many hours in their vacation bank. It's the payout of their vacation or their holiday at the time of their leave. Um, and then sick leave is capped at a five thousand dollar maximum, so that's a usually a small ba- um, buyout. Um, but you'll see, I um budgeted half a million because of what I already know, um, and some unknowns out there. And then in risk management, we have seen an increase in liability premiums specific to unemployment and workers' compensation. We will be working hard on that. We have hired someone in the risk department that is a safety specialist, and we're hopeful to bring some of that workers' compensation risk down um, and, and continue to work on that, but our liability premiums have increased. So I think I've said almost enough, except for this last slide. Twenty twenty-four budget amendment. When you look at the budget, you're going to see some estimates in the twenty twenty-four estimated column that are above the budget. Um, those are things that were unknowns or things that have occurred. Um, some of them may be like snow removal and salt. Some of them may be, um, I'm trying to think what other ones are. Anyway, I haven't finished it yet, so I don't know. Um, the at estimates, I love this, are acute. I meant to say accurate, but they're acute to the best of our knowledge as of this date, but are subject to change. So our estimates are, you know, we prepared them a couple of weeks ago. We hope they're about right. Um, we're going to bring amendment to you in June. That will be your final amendment for the budget year, um, and we will list all of those then. So don't be concerned when you see those estimates higher than a budget. We're going to bring them to you. We'll have a discussion about them um, and move that forward. Thank you for your patience and your time. This is much longer than we usually do for just receipt of the budget, but it's a new format. We wanted to have a discussion with you, and there are some things in there that we want to make you aware of as you open the book. Um, and I am available to meet with any of you and have any discussions at any time about any of the budget, as is Becky. Um, Becky Condi is the budget analyst for the city, and I know you've seen her face a lot, and she's done a lot of heavy lifting on this as well. So please reach out, otherwise we will be seeing you next Wednesday to have um a Q and A session with you. Thank you. So please reach out. Otherwise, we will be seeing you next Wednesday to have um, a Q and A session with you. Thank you.
Thank you. Um, for the sake of time, I would love to do a thousand questions right now, but um, we have three more budgets to accept and receive. So do you have a quick?
No, I was gonna move, I was gonna move that we accept the budget from the mayor's office.
I will second that. So I have a motion from Councilmember Green, a second from Councilmember Lamb. Could we do it as a voice vote or do a roll call?
You can do a voice vote on this one.
All right, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay or no. Okay, we have accepted and received the tentative budget and next Wednesday will be very fun. So for those still here, please join us. And for those online, please join us online because you will enjoy it.
I'm going to move to approve the minutes for April tenth, twenty twenty-four.
I'll second.
I have a motion from Councilmember Green, a second from Councilmember Whitlock. Discussion of the motion? See none, let's vote. I like voting. Okay, fine. Voice, all right, all those in favor say aye. Any opposed? That approves or that motion approves. Um, before we adjourn, is anybody in the need of a five-minute break before the next three or do you guys want to roll through? Okay, so first I'm going to make a motion to adjourn. Okay, I'm going to declare us adjourned and a five-minute break before we go on to the next three um, budgets.